The purpose of today's meeting is to review the options for jail needs assessment and functional space program update. I would like to review those options right now as we have condensed it through the committees. Option number one will be continue status quo or continue out of county housing. Option number two is build a new booking and release center and renovate existing buildings. Option number three will be to build a new housing capacity at the existing site, the new medical unit intake, release area, public lobby is constructed, and renovate the existing buildings. Option number four is a new greenfield site. Those have been the four options that have been reduced to by the committees. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Robertson from VRJS Consulting Service in Denver, Colorado, to further update us. And I would like to comment that we will not be taking public comment today. This was an informational meeting for the commissioners. So, Mr. Robertson?
Well, thanks, everyone. It's good to see you on a pretty gorgeous spring morning out there. If you don't have allergies, you'll get them with trees, but it's good to be here. We've been at it for about a year, so we've experienced all four seasons. This is a time to come together and really take a hard look at where we are with the project. Before I get started, I want to thank some key members of the committee that have worked throughout this project. They're both sitting over here, Annie and Roger. You have helped guide me as I've worked on this project, provided good information. Andrew has been the staple force, and Rita before she decided to jump ship was right there with us all throughout the project. And so, as a consultant, a project like this can never be done in a vacuum. It has to be done with a collaboration and with good information and good data, and the ability for me to test if I am seeing things correctly and understanding the issues. So without their participation and guidance, we wouldn't be where we are today. As I said, we've been at it for about a year. I've tried for today to condense it down into 20 slides and six handouts to take all of that information that we've done over that time and to allow you as commissioners to make an informed decision on what I consider to be some very critical next steps. So we've got a couple of hours set aside. My style is always to interact, have a conversation. It's not just listening to me. If we wanted to just do that, we could have done it remotely. So let's have a conversation about where we are. The commissioners have this presentation in front of you. You don't have some of the other handouts that I want to give to you at certain points of the presentation on to make sure that I hit them at the right time. Let's get started. So I want to talk a little bit about data, not a lot, because we've had probably half of the time we've been on the project. It's been data analysis. There are a number of presentations. I've had one presentation to you that had a whole lot of slides with a lot of data on it. I want to summarize what that data is and what it gave us in terms of looking at things into the future. I want to spend a great deal of time and talk about those options that Bob just summarized for you and what it means for each one of those options and what are the cost implications. One of the themes that you will hear from me throughout this presentation is that there is not a zero-cost option in Saline County. Every option has a price tag and a dollar associated. The numbers are different. They move in different boxes and different categories, but you are going to be spending dollars no matter what decision you make, and you're spending dollars now based on some decisions that you've made already. Then I want to wrap up with some recommended next steps. When we did our big data analysis, we had a major conversation about trends that were occurring in the county and what those trends meant in terms of capacity projections and where or what type of inmate was using the most of the beds in the facility and what was causing this rise in inmate population. This water barrel analysis that we use, you know, if the jail's the bathtub, the spigot that controls the water coming in is admissions, and the drain at the bottom is outflow, and average length of stay is how high the water is inside either the barrel or the toilet. So there's a number of things that impact capacity at the jail. It's how many people come and how long they stay. There's a lot of policy implications and policy conversations that occur with each one of those things, but how many folks come and how long they stay is what drives your capacity requirement. What we found in the water barrel analysis, the most dramatic thing was that average length of stay has been increasing dramatically. The average amount of time that a person stays in custody has been the driver for your inmate population change. And if you look at that chart, the E column, which is average length of stay, going all the way down, you'll see 154 percent increase over that time period, over that nine-year time period. So we took that information and said, okay, what else do we need to look at? So we took, with the help of IT, I mean, the strong help of them because they provided us the data, we looked at what's called a release analysis comparison. We looked at the years 2013, 2017. We collected a certain key piece of information on everybody that was released during those years. And what we found, and the reason we did releases because we wanted them to be finished, we wanted them to be out of the system. And what we found is that there was a small group of inmates, roughly around 4 percent or 7 percent, that used most of the jail bed days. It's that group that stays the longest, over 91 days. Pardon me for a minute. We also found in 2017 that 86 more inmates stayed that 91-plus days than in 2013. So there was a trend, an even more dramatic trend between 2013 and 2017 of folks that were staying in custody for a longer period of time, using most of the jail beds. That 39 number of jail bed increases related solely to folks staying in custody longer. So we did the water barrel analysis. It showed the trends. That average length of stay is driving it. We looked at two years' worth of comprehensive data and found that it's a small group that's chewing it up. And then we took it one step further. We looked at those folks that are staying in custody, that 91-plus days for the year of 2017. We took a 30-person sample, and we looked at what are some of the key reasons for why they are staying in custody longer? And what we found is that there are potentially, for our three local practices and/or decisions that are impacting that average length of stay. What is issues around pre-trial custody, that more folks are staying in custody in a pre-trial status? The issue of scheduling court hearings and continuances is driving that average length of stay, and some decision-making about when and what type of sentence an individual receives. So we saw three things that are affecting average length of stay. So it's not a building solution at this point. It's a policy and practice issue at this point. So what have we done so far? This is the good news about what's occurring in the county, because we aren't waiting for Jim Robertson to be finished. You're taking actions. You have implemented, and Annie's going to talk about it in, I forget which slide, is coming up soon, about pre-trial services, that you are this close to having it up and running. So a major accomplishment based on what we saw occurring with average length of stay. Court hearing docketing and sentencing decision-making. There is collaboration occurring within the criminal justice system. Policymakers, courts, county attorney, defense bar, law enforcement, that are working to manage that part of the process to reduce continuances, to change some of the sentencing considerations that we have, to help reduce the average length of stay. That's an extreme positive for what's occurring in the county right now. So let's talk about how many beds is the county going to need going forward? This is one of the hardest things that we do in a project like this, is try to predict the future, because we know that there are a lot of drivers that control capacity. And there are policies and practices that change. There are things that the state does that you can anticipate two years from now that may have a direct impact on how many folks stay in custody and how long they stay. So we look at trying doing it a couple of different ways. We do a couple of different scenarios to try and get some range of what could be future capacity. One of the things we did here is that we first did a historical trend analysis, and you'll see that today, and it says if we didn't take and do anything about pre-trial services or court hearing and docketing or sentencing decision-making, what's that number going to be just based on the historical trends going forward? And those trends continue, recognizing that you're already taking steps, but I wanted to use this as a baseline. Then we looked at two different, pardon me, two different scenarios based on policy impact analysis. Those things that we talked about, those three items that we discussed, that are going to have an impact on managing average length of stay. We used a five-year starting point as the average. We had to consolidate some data. We assume that pre-trial services, changes to docketing and sentencing decision-making will have an impact. We made that assumption. It's based on conversations with key players inside the criminal justice system, a recognition that we have to do more than just build beds. So we assume that they are going to have an impact on average length of stay. We used a very conservative growth estimate, recognizing that the county can sustain, you'll see this in a moment, can't sustain doing nothing. We used a 1 percent minimal growth factor for the future. We also used for the options that include building new capacity, what's called a classification factor. It's a number of beds that is needed so that the sheriff has ample capacity to move and manage inmates based on their behavior, not using every bed inside the facility. So you'll see that we add an additional factor of 15 percent to what our capacity projections are, so the sheriff has that adequate space. If we look at for 2038, the number of beds that is needed for scenario one, which, and I'll show you that in a minute, is 417 and 338 for scenario two. But let me go first to the historical trends. You're going to see, I have a summary of them, but let's look at historical trends for a moment. If you had decided to do absolutely nothing, no pre-trial services, no managing average length of stay, and just continued business as usual and housing inmates in other counties, by the year 2038, you are going to have 516 inmates in custody. If they were all being housed in a facility here, using that 15 percent classification factor, you are going to need 593 beds in Saline County. If you had chosen to do nothing, you ever made that decision? You're taking steps. You're implementing new policy and practice changes. So then, we looked at the policy impact, and we took these averages because we had to figure out how to get our arms around a projection. We knew that the average length of stay was not going to continue based on the historical trends because of the policy changes, so we looked at these averages as a starting point for the year 2019. And we then did two scenarios. Scenario one was a 1 percent annual increase in admissions, bookings, and average length of stay. We took the starting average of 17 and escalated everything out with a 1 percent growth change in each one of those categories. That number is 417. The other scenario that we looked at was an even more modest growth scenario, where we had a 1 percent increase in bookings, but we stabilized the average length of stay at 17 days. That is very aggressive. That means that all of the criminal justice policymakers are going to be actively engaged in managing that average length of stay, and they're going to make some policy decisions about how much incarceration can we afford, but that number becomes 338. Bear in mind, all three of those numbers are more than what you have now. So each one of those projections demonstrates that you are going to need to have either added capacity here or added capacity in other jurisdictions. So let me share this with you, but this is just a summary of the three different models that we took. And so you'll see, just as a side-by-side, if you had done nothing a year ago, and I started with pre-trial services and some of these other policy implications, and just let it continue, it's a very, very large number. But the good news is you've done something. The bad news is it's still going to cost you some dollars as you go forward. I want Annie to talk a moment about pre-trial services because for me, this was one of the most rewarding things that I have seen occur in the county, is that you didn't wait. You took action to implement this program. I participated in a couple of meetings, and the enthusiasm behind this program is phenomenal, in my opinion. But I want Annie to give you an update in terms of where we are, because we're real close to it. Anyway. Thank you.
If I'm talking for just a second, I should have informed the public that the subcommittee that's been through this entire process consists of Rita Deister, who was our former administrator, but now is a citizen-at-large, along with Andrew Manley, our county administrator, Sheriff Roger Sullivan, our community corrections director, Annie Grievous, Commissioner Monty Shadwick, and myself are the members of that committee that has been trying to facilitate all of this. So that having been said, then Annie?
Okay, thanks. So pre-trial, I'm not going to go off this slide exactly, but you do have it captured correctly. So we did- With the county releasing funds to get pre-trial started, we hired a pre-trial coordinator and a pre-trial ISO, and we have met with the judges and other facilities and been working very, very hard to get this going. You see, our start date is April 15th, a week from today. We are very excited about it. It's new to this district, and there aren't a lot of pre-trial programs across the state. So we are grateful that we're one of probably four or five. So what we're doing right now is we met with the judges on Friday mornings last week. We have policy and procedure written. They tweaked a little bit of that and changed some things. We do have the assessment tool completed and the sanctioning grid and service grid. All forms are completed, and so all policies are ready for my signature, and they will be forwarded to the county commission for final signature in those policies. We're ready to go for that. The next step is this Friday, we're hosting a meeting with some defense attorneys, public defender, county attorney, those kind of parties. Although we've met with those individuals over the year of us putting this together, we wanted one final meeting with them. It'll be at our office, and we're providing them with all the, they've already been provided, those were sent out Friday, with all the documents, policies, forms, the whole procedure, and an outline of how the program will work. The sheriff's office has been invited. There's a large group coming to this meeting. And so we will be talking about pre-trial services and how we anticipate it to work. Again, I want to stress, this is the judge's program. We are facilitating with the graciousness of the dollars from the county, but the judges have developed this program. Judge Johnson even went with us and toured some and observed some pre-trial programs in action. So they have designed the tools, they have approved the policies and the matrix and those kind of things, which is unique, what I'm finding. When I research outside of the state of Kansas, across the nation, judges are the last ones to support pre-trial programs. They kind of are the naysayers, and not in this district. They've just been super. So after Friday's meeting, we anticipate to start Monday morning. We'll be at dockets. We'll be over at the jail. The ISO will start working over at the jail to start those assessments on all those applicable for pre-trial. And at this point, we're doing every new arrest that comes into the jail. We don't care what the crime is. The judges want to see the assessment tool in action, and so that's what we're going to be doing. Any questions?
For the folks that are watching on TV that haven't been sitting in meetings for two years about the pre-trial, just walk us through what you mean by, some people don't know what pre-trial means. Explain the bond, I mean, maybe they would be released and things like that.
So what we have right now is there's a law that everyone has to be assessed a bond. It doesn't matter what crime you're committed, you're assessed some sort of bond or released on your own recognizance. So that has to be done within 48 hours. And typically, we have a bonding schedule. I would say it's a very antiquated bonding schedule. It's very old, and it's, the sheriff's office knows it, the judges know it, county attorney's office know it. So everyone that comes in within 48 hours does get some sort of a bond or can be released depending on what the crime is. And then they have first appearance with court at some point. They usually, if they want a reduction in bond, that's where they may request that or argue that with the judges. Then they have first appearances, and it goes on. There's no pre-trial. There's no release. There's no services for anybody. What we've seen is that many clients can't afford the bond. They sit in long-term, waiting for something to happen, or they are released and those services are still done, and they're carried on. Nobody's monitoring between arrest to final action of either a trial, acquittal, a charge, I mean, whatever's going to happen. So pre-trial instead will take everyone that is arrested, no matter what the charge is at this point, and we will assess them. And the assessment tool is not new. It's evidence-based, which tells you what's, the two factors you look for in a pre-trial assessment is. You don't want them to reoffend. You don't want to be a danger to the community. So public safety is critical, but also you're watching to see, are they likely to report to court? And those are really the two factors. You want to do those things. But what I've learned in all the research that I've done over the last 30-some years is there's a lot going on in that person's life, a lot of trauma, a lot of substance, a lot of mental health, and those kind of things. So our pre-trial program is going to allow, should they want it, and should their defense attorney choose to do it, we're going to allow services. Substance abuse, mental health, we'll be providing some of those services so that as they're waiting for a trial or, you know, a plea deal, whatever is going to happen, they're going to have the opportunity to get services and start that process of healing, reducing the likelihood of them returning to their jail, reducing bed space and recidivism is what our goal is in our pre-trial program. So they'll come in, based on the assessment tool, they'll score out, and the judges have devised a grid. If you saw it today, and I don't have a copy with me, but it's broken down to yellow, green, blue, and red, red being the highest risk, yellow being the lowest risk. So wherever they fall out, our staff will have the right to assess them a bond or an OR, depending on what their score equates to on the bond. Some people will not have an amount, and some people will have an amount. And the very, very high-risk reds are going to be an automatic call to the judge that is on call for that week. So that's going to happen. We'll still meet the 48-hour deadline. The assessment, some follow-up, we will run NCIC, which means we're going to check across the United States to make sure that there's nothing pending out there or nothing unusual. We'll verify their residence. We'll verify work if they say they can go to work or they have a job. We'll make several field assessments prior to final document being submitted. That final assessment tool and that full assessment will go to the judges only. That'll go directly there, and the judges will have it at first appearance. If the client has already bonded out, the client has to come, and the judge will give them conditions of their pre-trial. If the client was given a small bond and could not assess that bond or pay that bond, they'll come to first appearance. Our staff will be at every first appearance that exists every week from now on, and we'll give our recommendations as far as what we would like to see, but if they want a bond reduced or everything, the judge makes that determination. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think the critical thing that you said was people who are a threat to society aren't going to be let out.
Correct.
And that was always the first comment to me is, oh, you want to open up the jail and let everybody out.
I've heard the same thing, and that is not at all what's going on, because community corrections has been in this business for 30-plus years, and, you know, public safety is always our first. That is always your first concern. And so we will not, based on the assessment tool and the matrix that these judges have, determine it will not allow public risk to be an issue. But it will allow people that can work and provide for their families and be out in the community and maybe receive some mental health or some substance abuse services. We're not going to warehouse them in a jail anymore. We're going to release them and try to get them some services and have them being active community members is what you want. It's our community, and we want a safer, healthier community.
Right, and I agree with you that there needs to be some follow-up. And there's an example in here, and I have everybody that was housed in Saline County last 4-2. One of them was in there on a drug charge, and then nine continue and failed to appear. And now, so now he's been in the jail for 51 days. I don't, you know, don't know the whole story, but I mean, is that somebody that you think that this would be able to help us with average length of stays?
Very likely. It depends, again, until you assess them and see what that score pans out and where they fit on that matrix. But depending on the crime and depending the issue, that is exactly what we're going to do. And the judges are very consistent on, we're not going to send them back to that jail if they miss one court date. We're going to beef up our transportation. We're not going to send them back with one positive or a positive drug screen. We're going to beef up services. And so they're kind of taking the model of community corrections across the state and how we want to build healthier people and help people live healthy lives by providing them with services and the needs. So we're going to monitor this for a while. If we have a problem with the clients getting to court for various reasons, they don't have transportation, they're unable to do that, they have to take care of their children, we will provide the transportation. We're going to set up some call reminders out to them. They'll hear from the officers. There'll just be really intensive supervision on a pre-trial program, which typically doesn't offer as well as we're going to do.
Do you have any questions?
No, they're important questions, and it leads everybody to understand what the pre-trial situation is, so thank you for that.
Pre-trial services improves public safety. So we have pre-trial going on. One of the things that the committee recognized early on is that we cannot continue to just allow the historical trends to go out in the future without doing something. So we developed those four options that Bob mentioned early on to try and look at ways to respond to the needs of Saline County. We established some goals for each one of those options. First is, we wanted to establish options that provided for the long-term housing needs and the appropriate spaces for programs and services for the county. If you're going to be doing some of the things that Annie just talked- If you're gonna be doing some of the things that Annie just talked about, assessments, programs, and services, you need spaces for those to occur. One of the dynamic that is also changing in the county is that the type of inmate is different than it was in 1990-something, when the other jail was built. More mental health issues, more substance abuse issues, specialty populations are increasing, some of the higher-risk individuals are increasing, so we want to have the appropriate bed to house those individuals. And finally, with number three, is that we wanted to give you two different cost models for each one of those projection models that we created. You'll see a cost model later on for historical trends, but we wanted to take each one of those four options and look at the cost models associated with them. So let me pass this out. I took the options and summarized them, the key points of each of the options, onto one page, so that we can go through those and understand the key points of each one of them. In every option, one, two, three, and four, those things that we discussed early on in the slides about pretrial services, and judicial partners collaboration, those things continue. So they are a big piece of each one of the four options. So option one is, we do nothing from a capital side, we don't build anything in Saline County. We continue with pretrial services, we continue with the criminal justice system collaboration, we also continue to house inmates in other counties when we exceed our capacity in Saline County. So that's option one. Option number two is where we kind of split apart the operations of the Sheriff's Office, that we take the existing building and convert that to long-term housing, those folks that are staying in custody longer, to get rid of the oldest part of the jail, we do some renovation over there, and then we build at a site to be determined, that's one of the pieces that's missing in the options, we haven't done the sites, and we'll talk more about that at the last slide. But we then take it a different location and build what is called a new intake assessment, release, booking facility, whatever term we want, that receives everybody coming into the system, evaluates them, where pretrial services is located, other mental health professionals, where certain offenders are going to be located, those that are going through some of the early court proceedings. We build kitchen laundry and some other spaces, we develop space programs for all of these options that require a capital investment. And we have these two options, where we have the existing jail continuing to be used in some form, the Sheriff's Office and the administrative staff and the law enforcement component is still there, we have a different facility at a different site, which is all of our booking and assessment process. That's option number two. Option number three is to take, basically, option number two, and put it all, if possible, on the existing site. In the early planning for that building that you're in now, there was land identified to the west for some expansion, as well as a potential to use some of the parking area, meaning some of those services may have to be located differently. But it's to take as much as we can of our space requirements and do it at the existing And then option number four is to take all of the Sheriff's operations, all of the future capacity requirements, the intake and assessment process, all of that, and locate it at a new greenfield site, meaning it's a site that's currently not used for that function. And typically, greenfield means there's nothing else on there, so there's not a demolition and/or renovation cost associated with it, there may be as we go down the road. But those are the four options. Option one, no capital investment, continue to house out-of-county, pretrial, collaboration, all of that occurs. Option two, two separate facilities, pretrial and all the collaboration occurs. Option number three, bring it all back to the Sheriff's Department, pretrial collaboration continues to occur. And option number four is to take it all, put it someplace else. So how do we, how do we begin to evaluate which option is the best? I mean, there's values associated with that, but there also has to be some common variables that we look at. And so we identified four variables that we will use to evaluate each one of those options from an operational perspective, not a capital investment, but an operational perspective. How much is it going to take to operate, to spend on operating each one of those options over that 20-year period? So we looked at, how many staff is it going to take? It's the biggest piece of the budget. Sheriff's Office staff, pretrial staff, contract services, how many staff is it going to take? How many out-of-county trips are gonna be required with those options? How many times does a Sheriff's Office have to go to a different county to pick up, to take, to do whatever with a inmate or a group of inmates going out to another jurisdiction? We put all that together, and we estimated the first year operating cost, and then escalated that out over 20 years. So this is a summary of the first year operating cost. There are a lot of spreadsheets and data that goes behind this number, but what you'll see with each one of those options is that we identified the number of staff that is required, we identified, let me get the mine, we identified the number of staff within the Sheriff's Office, that's the captive down to the office specialist position, we identified it in each one of the options, in each one of the scenarios. We then look at medical, mental health, prisoner meals, out-of-county trips, pretrial staff, factored all of that in, and identified our first year of operational cost, and then in each one of the options escalated it out. In option one, the staffing requirements are the same for both scenario one and two. That's why you don't see a second column for scenario two, because in option one, it's continuing out-of-county. There may be a few more trips associated with that, but the staffing requirements aren't the same. So what you'll see going forward is that in each option, it includes dollars for pretrial services. That continues in each one of the options. So from an operational perspective, and you'll get, we'll get a sheet in a moment that summarizes it all. Looking out 20 years, based on the operational variables that I identified, how much is it gonna cost in each one of the options? Well, our baseline to review is historical trends. If you had decided to not even do pretrial or anything else, how much money potentially could the county spend in 20 years? Almost $187 million. You'll see in a moment the bulk of that, or almost an equal part of that, is out-of-county housing of inmates. But you've decided not to do the historical trend analysis, that's the good news. You're doing other things to offset that dollar amount. So what's, this is just operations, this is not capital. So in option one, how much is it gonna cost to operate? This is housing out-of-county, so we have an out-of-county cost, we have a trip cost, our staffing numbers are different, but our out-of-county costs are also different than the other options. And that, over that same 20-year period, the operational cost associated with option one is either $154 million or $141 million over 20 years. In option two, two separate buildings, the operational costs are $170 million, or $166 million in option number two. In option number three, which is bringing it all together on your current site, your operational costs are different than the others, you don't see much of a difference between the two different scenarios, because you're consolidating everything. Option two has the highest number of staff, because it's two separate buildings, so you've got some duplication of services. Option number three, you brought it all back to the current site, either $160 or $157 million over 20 years. And if you take it all and move it to a different location, it's the lowest operational cost number of the two, because you're gaining staffing efficiency with the size and type of housing units. That's not the end of the picture, because in options two, three, and four, we have a capital investment. You have to spend some dollars on building and/or renovating things in Saline County. So how did we come up with the capital side of the equation? We did the same thing that we did on the operational side. We established a number of variables to keep it consistent over each one of the options. And so we looked at how many, how big, how much additional square footage has to be constructed. And so I met with the Sheriff's Office and other folks, and we did a space program. It's a document, has a lot of spreadsheets in it, it goes through every department of the Sheriff's Office, and identifies how much space is required for them to operate. So we did that for each one of the options. We identified a potential demolition and/or renovation square footage estimate. In options two and three, we're doing something to the existing buildings, so there's demolition and renovation that occurs. We looked at other project cost as a percent of the cost of construction, other project costs are the owner's side of the table, design fees, contingencies, permits, site acquisition may be in there, utility improvements, there's other things that are in there other than just the construction cost. The furniture is gonna take to move into the building, it's gonna take to operate, your computer systems, et cetera. So we added 20% onto top of the construction cost, to get a capital estimate. We did not escalate this to a potential midpoint of construction, that is, oftentimes, what is done, I have another sheet that talks about escalation. But because we don't know where we're going yet, we don't know what the cost is going to be to construct or renovate new spaces, because we don't know yet when it's going to start. But typically, you renovate to the midpoint, you go out a year and a half to two and a half years, depending on the market, how things are done, and you look at that as an estimate of the capital side of the equation. So what the capital side look like for each one of the options? Again, it's different. Historical trend analysis, we're not spending a dollar on any capital investment. We're not doing that option, or we're not spending anything. In option one, we're not doing anything from a capital investment. Keeping everything the way it is, keeping the Sheriff's Office on the road, traveling between counties, taking it based on the jurisdiction. In option two, two separate facilities, two different scenarios in terms of capacity, what we've done in scenario one and scenario two on each of these options is that we took away one housing unit. That's how we got the number down, looked at that as an opening capacity. $57 million, $50 million for option two, two separate buildings. Option three, capital costs are a little bit lower, but again, the numbers are closer than some of the others, $50 million, $43 million. The greenfield site, the new location, the biggest number, $82 and $75 million roughly for each one of those options. And they are side by side, just as a comparison, and again, they are escalated out to the midpoint. So what the heck does all of this mean? Well, the challenge for the committee was to print only one piece of paper. So that we can get a farce around, how do we go forward with this project? And so what you'll see in that document is, that we've separated it out. On the left-hand side of the document, the majority of it is operational cost, it's your budget, you're paying for that year after year. On the right-hand side is your capital cost, typically approved by the voters, different taxing stream in many cases. Sometimes it's considered part of the budget, sometimes it's not, but I separated it out to show the comparisons between each one of the options. And so what's intriguing, if you look at the historical trends, the one at the top, again, almost $187 million, if you had chosen to do nothing, you have it. But then if we look at options one, two, three, and four, and we look at the operational cost associated with them, they are, in many cases, pretty darn close. Other than option two, which is the two separate facilities, has the highest operational cost, followed by option three, consolidating everything on one site, followed by option one, out-of-county, but the lowest operational cost is to build new, everything. Pretrial services continues, all the collaboration continues in each one of these options, but there's a capital side to the equation, so there's a different dollar associated with that. And that's the capital cost that you see on the far two right columns. And again, the numbers are pretty close in options two and three. It's a zero in option one, because you're continuing out-of-county, but in option four, the greenfield site, it is the most expensive, most expensive capital investment of the four options. I found it intriguing, as we were doing this with the committee, to look at the differences between the lower operational cost and the higher capital cost. It is not uncommon, when you construct a new facility, that you gain staffing efficiencies. That doesn't mean it's less staff. It means that we have better-designed housing units. Typically, they are larger housing units, we have improved sightlines, circulation patterns inside the building, that we are able to achieve some staffing efficiencies in a new facility, which is your ongoing annual cost to the taxpayers. Capital cost is often viewed as one time, it may take you years to pay off the debt, but it's a single investment, whereas the operating cost continues to live on. I have no idea what time it is, anybody know?
Ten to ten.
Ten to ten, okay. So, handout number four, I forgot again. So how do you know what are the advantages and disadvantages of each one of the options? So the committee put together a document that does our best to summarize the advantages and disadvantages of each one of them, because they are all different. And so if we look at contract housing, the advantages and disadvantages, well, one of the big advantages is that there's no capital investment, don't spend any dollars on a capital investment. Don't spend any dollars on a capital investment. An advantage of option one is that you've implemented pretrial services and you're continuing to manage the average length of stay. But what are some of the disadvantages of option one? A lot of money going out of the county to other jurisdictions on an annual basis, exceeding a million dollars a year. You've already spent five and a half million dollars, I think, so far on out-of-county costs. That trend's going to continue. You're going to be spending dollars out. There are risks within base transportation, going long distances to move the inmates. There's a potential continuance to add to average length of stay. As I met with the judges, the county attorney, and other individuals, the issue of access to their clients is a big deal. And in their opinion, has an impact on continuances, but has an impact on increasing average length of stay. There's absolutely no guarantee going forward that you will either have the counties that are willing to take your inmates and have the capacity, or that they are willing to hold to the current contract price to house inmates in their jurisdiction. You have no control over any of that. So you could be said at any point in time, we're no longer taking your inmates, or we're taking your inmates, but the price is not $40 a day, it's now $60 a day. So those other counties are controlling those costs. There's ongoing maintenance issues with your current facility. We'll show some of that as it goes forward, as we go forward in the presentation. Continuing to use that building is going to have a dollar associated with maintenance and capital improvement. You've been spending money over time. The trend is that you're spending more each year. You have limited parking at the current facility. There's that significant expense over 20 years, and you're delaying any capital expenditure at this point with option one. Option two, the two separate facilities, is one of the advantages is that you are going to continue to use your current facility in some capacity. You're not abandoning that structure. It allows for future expansion because you're building, you're keeping some of the parts at the existing building, but you're also, if you select the right site, have the ability to expand at the other location. Probably doesn't require eminent domain of acquiring property. Again, pretrial services is implemented, and managing the average length of stay continues. So those are the advantages of option number two. Some of the disadvantages are, you have to buy some land. You've got to get land someplace. You don't know what the county owns, but it's going to either require acquisition and/or repurposing existing land. Requires two facilities to operate. Not that it's not uncommon to do that in some larger jurisdictions, but here, you're going to be separating out, so it has that higher operational cost because of the two different buildings. So you have some duplicated services. There's still going to be some ongoing maintenance issues at your current facility, and there's limited parking at your current facility. Option three, again, current facility is utilized, pretrial services and average length of stay is continuing to be managed. What are some of the disadvantages? I'm not convinced, and it's going to be part of my recommendations for going forward, I'm not convinced that there's enough land at the current site to do what needs to be done to handle the future growth. It's going to take somebody else's knee to confirm that or to evaluate that. But there may be a land acquisition requirement if you're staying close to that site. There are some security issues that are going to be required during the construction process as you're building on an existing site. There may be some phasing issues of the construction process, which may have an impact on construction costs. I don't know yet if it will, but there may be some phasing that occurs. There's, again, ongoing maintenance issues of your current facility, and again, limited parking on that existing site. And if you use all the parking area for the capital side and the housing side, then you may need to build parking at a different place. So the Greenfield site, we know what the disadvantage is, is that it's got the highest capital cost. But the first big advantage is it's the lowest ongoing operating cost. Provides staffing, housing efficiencies to all new construction. So you start off brand-new. You're not faced with a major capital improvements program going forward. You would, I think, have utility savings with new systems, so that would be in place to help with energy efficiency in a new construction. If you select the right site, it allows for future expansion. It's all the needs of the agency consolidated in one location. No security issues during construction because it's all occurring at a different location. And again, pretrial services and the criminal justice system collaboration is implemented. Disadvantages are land acquisition, and it's the highest capital investment. The common theme to each one of those options is the work that you're already doing and the assumption that it continues with pretrial services and the criminal justice system collaboration. So they are, they are different in terms of pros and cons, advantages and disadvantages of each one of those options. They have a cost associated with them. There's really not a zero-cost solution for Saline County. Hard decisions to make to get your arms around. But one of the things that I do want to share with you is that this issue of ongoing maintenance costs, and what happens if you, lack of a better word, kick the can down the road and delay a capital investment, what is some of that escalation cost going forward? So, got some information from the county on what you've been spending on maintenance costs at the current facility. And what you'll see is, I don't have a handout, but that's why I apologize, but that in 2001, your maintenance costs were about $22,000. Last year, it was three times that, it's $67,000 per year for maintenance on that building. Jails don't last forever. They run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They have a much different life cycle than this building. Different, well, you could argue, but different people come to this building that are in custody, they go to the jail. But you control the hours of operation of this building. You do not control the hours of operation of the jail because it's always open. So it runs on a much different life cycle cost analysis because it operates 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, than a facility like this, which is closed during certain hours of operation. It's estimated that your capital improvement program, you're seeing in the red, these are anticipated costs that may go forward. So you're going to be spending dollars at your existing facility, no matter what you do. If you continue to use that building, if you select option one, out of county, you have to anticipate as the costs go forward, or as the years go forward, these numbers may in fact even grow. So you have to plan for that in your budget. I've been asking many presentations, what's the typical life cycle of a facility? How long should it last? Well, we in government, it's hard for us to sometimes assume that something wears out, that we're going to give up a building. 25, 30 years is kind of a rule of thumb that we look at in terms of life cycle costing. The building's going to last that period of time. It's the latter part of its life cycle that you start seeing higher maintenance costs, higher capital improvement costs. Part of it is the technology is out of date. Technology is changing so quickly. The doors and electronics that were installed in the existing facility, I would venture to say you can't get parts for some of it now. It's even hard to repair or maintain them because the technology is obsolete. And so that is occurring as you go forward. So just as a point of reference is that if you choose option one, these costs are still going to be there. You're going to have to begin to plan for those costs. And if, last handout, if the project is delayed with either one of the options, the cost of construction, the capital side is going to continue to escalate. We're in a pretty good market with costs going up, but what I did is I escalated at two and a half percent a year, each one of the options, and escalated it out. So if you were to start construction this year, which isn't going to happen, and then started escalating out, what you'll see is that the numbers grow. As an example, in option two, the first scenario, if you were to construct in 2019, we had to start with this year. We had to estimate the costs of that year, 57 million. If you wait till 2028, the cost could potentially rise to 71 and a half million dollars or even more. Same thing with option three. You'll see the cost escalate out 10 years to see what, how the cost could grow. And the same thing with option four. So they're all in that one page. So there is a, a cost associated with delaying decision-making as you go forward. Okay. Years worth of work in a couple of handouts, 20 slides, or 27, 28 slides. It's been an enthusiastic year, at least from my perspective. Folks on the committee may have a different perspective of it. But there are some things now that the committee's work is done and is ready to do some further next steps. And these are my recommended next steps for the county. My work is finished with these options. I think the county has to have a serious conversation about which of those four options are the ones that we think are in the best interest of the taxpayers and citizens of Saline County and prioritize them. You've got to figure out, if not one, two, three, and four prioritize that way, that's the number associated with the option. You may decide that option three is your best priority, and option one is your second, and option whatever it is. You have to prioritize the ones that you think are in the best interest of the citizens and taxpayers of Saline County. Once you've done that, I firmly believe that you have to then take the top two and do further analysis on those. You need to consider selecting an architectural and engineering firm to develop concepts and further cost estimates for the top two options. The reason I say the top two is because, let's play this out for a moment, suppose the top two were number four and number three. Number four is the Greenfield site. Number three is putting it all at the sheriff's office. What has to occur is, a couple of questions has to be answered. Number one, conceptually, so we have to, we have to develop a model based on actual square footages and drawn to scale of how pieces of that project are going to fit together, particularly on your existing site. Where is housing going to go? Where is intake and release going to go? Where is food services? How is that all going to fit on that existing site? Can it all fit on that site? And what's going to be the cost associated with utility and infrastructure improvements? So we need to determine, can it fit? And secondly, what's going to be the cost associated with it and refine the cost estimates? The capital cost estimates that I did earlier are based on actual projects, and we use an average cost per square foot for the building. The A and E team that you would select to come in and work on these options is going to use even more current cost estimates. They're going to give you a better dollar figure. Whether it's going to be lower, higher, the same, I don't know. But the cost estimates are merely that. It's a cost estimate at a point in time. So I recommend that you prioritize your options. I recommend that you select a firm to develop those concepts and more refined cost estimates. At some point, you are going to select a option. That option that you select is then going to be part of determining what is going to be our implementation plan for getting that option and moving it forward. I don't think you can keep four options on the table and try and go to the voters with four options. I don't think you can keep two options on the table and take that to the voters for approval. My perspective is, is that you do all your homework, your due diligence, you get it down to one, you have the best cost estimate at that point in time that you can, you have the best reasons for why that is the best option for Saline County, is citizens and taxpayers. And then you start the implementation plan. It might include having to go to the voters. I don't know what those answers are yet. It may be something different, but that's the implementation plan, which is the next step for where we go forward. In closing, costs are going to change the longer it takes to implement one of the options, other than if you decided to just do option one. If that became your choice, costs aren't escalated because there's no capital investment. But you don't know what the future is going to hold for that option because somebody else is controlling the dollars that you have to spend. The other counties that you are relying upon are controlling your dollars, and you're sending the money to them as opposed to keeping it in Saline County. Last slide. That's it.
Messrs? Comments, questions?
Chair, I've got a couple, if I may. And again, I've been on the committee and just, I appreciate that this is being televised, and some of my questions have already been answered.
Yep, that's okay.
But I want the public to...
Hopefully, I'll get the same answer.
Yeah, that's fine. Our 154% increase in the state, how does that compare to other counties that you have been with?
High over. Pretty high. Trying to figure out why was just a piece of the puzzle. But that was, you saw that occur in a relatively short period of time. We were, you know, eight days, 10 days, 11 days in there, and all of a sudden, boom, it jumped up. I don't know if you can tie a direct correlation, but you saw that change when you were housing out of county. So there is a relationship between out of county and increase in the average length of stay. Pretrial services is intended to improve public safety, and offset of that is reducing average length of stay. But pretrial services ensures that the right people stay in custody and the right people are managed in a different environment. It will have an impact on average length of stay. It may not bring it down 100%, but it's the other two variables. It is the criminal justice system collaboration that has the greatest ability to influence average length of stay. And you're working on that.
Right. And just, just as a point of reference, you had said that just 4% of the people were in over 91 days, but as of last week, it was 65 inmates were there over 91 days, which is 25%. So it's not getting any better. And I guess that's...
That's not necessarily good news, but that's...
And that's, this is just a snapshot, too.
Yep, absolutely.
And as yours was the year.
Yes.
So I'm not saying that. And I'm also not saying that this is a jail problem or the sheriff's problem. I mean, he's not keeping them in there longer. It's just the criminal justice system is. And one of the things that worries me is, you know, we don't have any lawyers in this group, and, you know, do we really have the right group here? I mean, do we, they're not represented. A lot of these are continuances, and it just keeps going on and on, and judges okay it. So, you know, I guess it leads me to my next question. If we would have built the jail that was, that was on the election, at the last election, would it be full now?
I can't remember what the number was, but I think my answer is yes. I can't, I can't remember what the number of beds was. If you remember. Yeah, I don't recall. I know that, let me, let me respond to that in a more broader sense. Having the issue not paying... Having the issue not pass the last time is not necessarily a negative. It allowed us to focus differently, allowed us to look at things differently. We took a different approach this time. There are things that are occurring inside the criminal justice system that weren't occurring then, conversations, collaboration, pretrial services. And so, we have a better opportunity this time to manage capacity than we did the last time.
I agree.
Any questions or comments from the commissioners? No one else?
Thank you for the information.
I expect everybody to study this handout. The test will be next week.
I failed to mention that Under Sheriff Brent Mehlander was also a member of the committee too, so I should have mentioned that earlier. I would like to call on the sheriff for just a second, Roger, to let the public know some of the things that wide or short-staffed over there with the morale is at the jail and the issues hiring and retaining jail officers. So, if you could elaborate on that for a moment?
Well, that's a tough environment to work in, start with. And it's, as far as why we have difficulty retaining staff, I think it's... Part of it's the job. So, you know, if you come to work for the county, you have the opportunity to move up to the county, and a lot of them do, or they get another law enforcement job that quite frankly pays them better than what they get paid working in the jail. What I've seen with other facilities, when they, Reno County is a good example, when they built their new jail, they did have better retention. They have better retention, and I called the sheriff and talked to him just within the last month, and he said, "That's ongoing, you know. It's a facility that's more inviting to work in." I guess, you know, everybody wants to work in a nice place, and if you come to work in a safe environment, you know, it's more rewarding to them, and safer for the inmates, and it's safer for the officers, and they have opportunities. They've got a huge programming area in that jail that allows them to work with the inmates so that it's not a us versus them mentality. We're not just locking people up like we are right now. And I think that part of the reason that we have trouble with the officers we have is with all this movement of all these inmates all the time, most, some of those inmates don't want to move. Some of them do. Some of them want to get away from inmates that are in there, or for whatever reason they like to move. But when you're constantly packing someone's property up and moving it, and then things get lost, or things don't get transferred, you know, some of the inmates, we have to put in place discipline for the inmates that refuse to move because some of them got to move. So, if they refuse to move, we take their privileges away for a certain length of time, and then we ask them to move again because we have to get them out, we have to move some out. And that's a constant battle, and that's, if you don't think that's not stressful for the people working there, you're wrong. You clearly never worked in a correctional facility. Because just like when you scold your kids, you don't really want to do it, but you have to. You know, you don't want your kids to be in trouble. They don't want to have trouble with inmates. They want the inmates to come in, do their time, get the things they need, and get down the road. And the last thing I want to do is build a jail, but the time's to do something. You know, we need to either get the population down where we can manage it or not. Because the people that do go outside are the inmates that aren't a problem. So, what you have is the inmates that have mental health issues, we have people with medical issues, we have people with disciplinary problems, you know. Those are the inmates that stay here. They don't go somewhere else. It's the ones that are the problem children that stay here because if I take them to Minneapolis or Cloud County or Boyd, tomorrow we get a phone call saying, "Come pick them up," because they've been involved in some incident up there, and frankly, they don't want to deal with it, and they don't want to lose their officers because they're dealing with bad inmates from Saline County. And I know how it works on that side of the coin because at one time, before we got to our staff, we used to have a bunch of inmates from Johnson County, and they were model inmates. You know, you've never had trouble with Johnson County's inmates because if you did, you'd call Johnson County and say, "Come get this guy, he's a problem." So, those are the inmates that go out of county are the ones that just want to get through jail, get their time in, get whatever, and get down the road. But we're keeping them longer and longer because their attorneys can't see them, you know, probably, I never really thought about that till today, you know. Yeah, our length of stays went up, and it started to climb like a rocket when we started housing out of county. It really did. I never really put those two things together until I was sitting here watching, looking at that slide. So, you know, they can't make it for court appearances. I don't know how many times in the past that the courts would call over and say, "We need somebody for court at 2:00 this afternoon," and we'd pack them up and bring them over. Well, that's a little difficult to do if they're in Washington County or if they're in Mitchell County.
Andy, do you have any questions for Jim at this stage?
No.
How about Rita or Brent? Any comments?
No.
Andrew?
Couple of questions and comments for Jim. There's a lot of legislation being talked about right now that's, you know, the state has issues too with overpopulation. How is DCA going to impact the local system?
You know, I have to be honest to say, I haven't fully looked at what's down the road with the state. I know in some of our conversations, we discussed that they're trying to push some of those, a certain type of offenders back to the county without compensation. That's got to be factored in. I don't know what the exact amount's going to be, but it points to Monty's comment about continuing to have this criminal justice system collaboration, because if those folks get pushed back, it's going to potentially increase average length of stay. So, pretrial services has to be even more involved in making sure the right person is in custody, that is the biggest risk to the community.
My other question is, you know, we had to pick a number. We picked 20 years to look out and say, you know, this is where we want to be, but we know past 20 years, is this model going to continue to grow? Or is there a point in population, a percentage of inmate population compared to Saline County's population where it starts to level off? Do you ever see that?
Yes and no. Two comments to that. If we look at things historically across the United States, jail capacity is lower this year than it has been in previous years. Not everybody fully knows what's driving that. Some of it's the economics of, we can only afford so much incarceration. But what you'll find is that with these two models, we took a very low-growth projection. So, I think we've already built in some of that leveling off that we might see. But the reality is, is that trying to project what the future's going to be out 20 years is almost next to impossible to come up with the number. So, we look at ranges of numbers, and we look at what potentially could occur with admissions and bookings.
Okay. I do want to announce that, or, excuse me, go ahead.
I just wanted to tag on to Andrew's, and I have a question, on the legislation. And the reason I'm very familiar with is because we have no one funding source, state, federal, county, foundations, funding, whatever grants we apply for. And so, I watch state legislation very closely because we know that prisons are overcrowded. We know that the current three-member transition team that's going on right now is looking for ways to reduce prison stays, but also riots and serious, serious, dangerous things that are going on in most of the prisons. And we know that their staffing is just what the sheriff outlined, low pay, high turnover, not wanting to stay. And in the last riots that occurred, several of them were severely wounded. So, that push is already going on. I forwarded things to Andrew and others to update on some current bills. In the past, a way to reduce revocations to prison, which are long-term bed stays of people going to prison, they implemented a bill that would allow for so many jail bed stays at the county level, and that's a mandate. And then, after you've met that mandate, you can recommend 120 or 180 days at the prison. And it's really only half that time because you get a day credit for every day you are good. And all of us could go in for 100 days and stand on our head and do what they want you to do. It's not hard. So, they did that. And that was a mandate that the judges and us, community corrections officers, could not go to court on a client and not recommend those jail bed stays. So, you serve so many jail bed stays, once you've conquered that, then you can go in and recommend a prison day stay, and then you have to go back and recommend the second prison day stay. Those are mandates on our agency. We don't have a choice. Court Services does it, parole does it, community corrections. So, I know I have 500 adult active offenders right now. I don't have a clue what parole has, but it's gotten to be in the 250s, and court services, applicable to them, it's got to be a couple hundred also. So, you're talking about a lot of people using those jail bed stays. So, now, to reduce prison bed stays, they've, and it's already passed the House and the Senate, and now it's in committee. So, the current, how the current bill sets is that they've increased the jail bed stays at the county to 10 full stays. And then, after you've maxed that out, you can recommend only 60 days in prison. And I think it's a one-time 60-day stay now. So, you can see what's happening, and it happens all the time. Counties are expected to meet expectations and solve the state's problems with no money. So, unfunded mandates happen to my agency all the time, it happens to the county level, it happens to a lot of places. And so, that's currently going on. And it's not, I don't believe it's the current administration, the new governor and that. I think it's below that and the fact that our prisons are doing the same thing our jails are doing. And it got completely out of control over the last three years. And we've been blessed that that hasn't happened here. But I think that will continue to be a push, and I think how that affects, I'm not a researcher. I can't tell you, I can't analyze and project 20 years out to tell you what it's going to look like. But what I can tell you is, 34 years in this business, watching legislative action, testifying there, writing grants over and over and over and over, it'll continue to move in that direction. I believe that the county will be expected to do more, no additional costs, and they'll look to ways to save that. So, you need to make sure you're talking to your legislators. I know you've met with them, but I'm telling you, those things are current and would really need to be spoken. And I've testified, we testified against that bill because it impacts all to us, but it's already at committee.
Roger, you had something else? No? Okay. Mr. Robertson, your level of participation from this point forward will be what?
I'll be consolidating all of the information that I presented, putting it forward in a summary report, and then available for conversation if you need us. But contractually, this concludes the piece of the work that I was contracted to do.
We will be looking for your level of participation in the conversation part, but I can assure you of that when we get everything put together and do our selling job with the community. I do want the public to know that there will be public input as we move forward at a point in time that we will be taking public comments and suggestions and trying to ingest it and draw our decision-making and so forth. So, thank you very much, Jim.
If I could just offer one closing comment, and it's really, it's not lip service that I'm saying. The county has taken the right approach to this project. You haven't looked at either just capital or just policy and practice changes. You've looked at a combination of the two. There's no silver bullet. You've looked at a comprehensive set of options. It's now time to evaluate those. But so far, in my opinion, you've taken the right steps and the right approach, and you have the right people participating in the conversation. So, congratulations.
Well, again, Jim, thank you for your hard work in all of this. I want to thank all of the committee members that sit on this committee over time in the several, many, many, many meetings that we've met to, the sheriff and Annie, for garnering information from the behind-the-scenes people with the judges and with the attorneys and so forth, and everybody that was involved in that. So, thank you very much. So, unless there are other comments or questions from the commissioners, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second to adjourn today's meeting. All of you can ever say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the sign for adjournment.